Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have the roll call. Okay, Ms. LaChelle.
All councilors present, an acquorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have the agenda approval. Does everyone have an opportunity to review the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, if there's no amended agenda, I'll approve it as presented.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, please start voting. Ms. LaChelle.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Up next, we have citizens' comments. Citizens are allowed to come up to the podium and make comments. We ask that you keep your comments below within three minutes. If you're still talking at three minutes, I will politely ask you to end your comments at that particular time. So far, I only have one comment card. And tell you what, I'm struggling with trying to see the name. Oh, it's Dan McCann. Okay. Come on, Dan. I'm gonna have two.
Dan McCann, 1809 Sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. I want to congratulate you for your choice of Chief of Police. I've known Ken for years. His father, he told me is an ex-marine. His father did a good job raising him, and because I'm 72, I can say that. And those of you who don't know what goes on here with the police, the sheriff's office, and some of my friends in the Highway Patrol, they are highly trained. And remember, that OJ situation really got people to study things on evidence and how to handle a crime scene. We've got a great law enforcement group in the whole valley. Thanks for putting Mr. Anderson as Chief of Police. You did a good job. And the reason why is they've been leaving because they wanted to be their parents. Ken's got roots here. He should be here a long time. He didn't want to leave.
All right. And then we have Ralph Semblem.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
My name is Ralph Semblem, Alamosa, Colorado. I wanted to discuss our proposal to council that the Martinez Shoe Store on State, State and Main, basically, be added to the city's historical rolls. We did send council the documentation for it, to which I wanted to also state that the history of this building goes really from, starts really, from 1908, when two sisters moved to Alamosa and started a ladies' fashion store, the first fashion store out here. The Leon Sisters, to which Leon Memorial Hall is dedicated, upon their passing, they donated $500,000 to ASU, or ASC at the time, for building that structure. But they ran a business for 50 years, a fashion clothing store, catered to some high-end clients in Alamosa. Back when there were, I think, at the time, two cars in Alamosa, is what I was told, from an email from a person, a young lady at the time, that had firsthand experience walking into her store and not being allowed to touch anything because they just didn't know her. But we also want to thank you for your support. This year's been a great year for us. We've had as many as, I could say, five buildings, five structures added to the historical rolls. So, thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, and thank you for all the good work you all are doing. Okay? Also, at this time, would like to briefly acknowledge two elected officials I see in the audience, Commissioner Darius Allen and Sheriff Robert Jackson. Thank you so very much for being in attendance tonight. Okay? All right. Looks like this is what a lot of people came here for. The next item on the agenda, the ceremonial item, the oath of office for our new police chief, Kenneth Anderson. Please come up front, chief.
Hey, first off, thank you for everybody that showed up today in support of this. So, I would like to thank the Alamosa City Council and the mayor for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I would also like to thank the Alamosa City Manager, Heather Brooks, for trusting in my abilities as a leader to continue moving our department in a positive direction by promoting me as the new Chief of Police. So, thank you, Heather. I'm very excited for this opportunity that the city of Alamosa is providing. I look forward to working closely with all members of the Alamosa Police Department and building a stronger relationship with our community and partners. I've devoted my law enforcement career to the Alamosa Police Department, and I cannot wait to start this next chapter. This would be so much easier without everybody here.[465.52][465.52](Laughter) Yeah. So, I wouldn't be the man today without the support of my family and my department. So, if you don't mind, I would like to take a second to acknowledge my family.
Please do.
Okay.
(inaudible) I told you I'd keep it short, right? So, I guess the last thing I've gotta say is basically, I look forward to, for this opportunity that you guys have all given me, and thanks again for your time. Thank you, everybody that showed up. Once again, I really appreciate the support. Dan, thanks. And everybody else, the academy's here. If you guys don't know who the guys in the blue are, that's our, that's our police academy. So, thanks. Appreciate everything, guys.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Daniel, then Counselor V. Hill, and we'll keep it going, okay, to the next person who wants to talk. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I think everyone here knows how wonderful a chief Kenny's gonna be, and so I'm super excited that you said yes when we offered you, when Heather offered you the position. It's a big undertaking, and I know you're going to do a wonderful job. So, thank you for leading our community in this way. We're really looking forward to having you as our chief. Thanks.
Counselor V. Hill, then Counselor Grego.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Anderson, thanks for taking this on. Appreciate you. You bring a new energy to our, to our group and our city. It's awesome that you're a homegrown kid, and good luck.
Counselor Grego, then, I believe, Counselor Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've had the honor of knowing Kenny's when, when he first come on the force, and I've seen how he's grown through the years, you know, and I even told him one day, I said, "You're gonna be the next chief of Alamosa." And he said, "Nah." He says, "I'm just happy to serve this, the community and work with my fellow officers." And you see it, how you work with them, and I think you're gonna do a great, great job, you know. It's, you know, and sometimes you get tongue-tied. I've been doing this for 35 years, and I get tongue-tied up here, you know, talking, you know? So, I think as years go by, you're gonna just grow into this, and I'm so happy that our city manager chose the right person, and I think you'll do a great job, Kenny.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Carson.
Ken, I just wanted to say thank you for taking this role on. It's a, it's a big job, and I know you'll do great, and city council has your back. And thank Heather for picking a good chief. You'll do a good job, and I'm sure your team's gonna, you know, be behind you all the way. Thanks again.
Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Hensley.
So, I also want to thank you, echoing what everyone else is saying, but I know you're gonna do a great job. I know we're in challenging times, but at the same time, there's a lot of real positive things as well. And so, I know you're gonna lead the group well and really take good care of Alamosa, which I'm glad, and it makes me feel safe and secure. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz.
Counselor Brawls.
Yeah, Chief Anderson, nice to say that word. Congratulations, and you have our support and confidence, so we recognize that and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brawls.
Chief Anderson, Chief Anderson, thank you very much. I'm glad that you are our new chief. Thing I know about Chief Anderson is that, one thing, he's community-focused. I like that. The other thing I like is that he's real honest and sincere. If you really want to hear what he feels about a situation or issue, he will tell you like it is. And I really appreciate that. And the other thing is that you're fair and just, and it looks like you do a great job with leadership because it's obvious by the amount of people that showed up here to support you tonight. So, we all wish you the best and much, and much success.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Up next, we have the consent calendar A.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, we start voting, please. Ms. LaChelle.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next on our agenda, we have regular business, business brought forward by the city staff. The first item is under Public Works, item 1A, Valley Scrap Metal.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
This is an appeal of a planning commission recommendation to deny a condition of use permit. There was some confusion, and the applicant was a no-show at the meeting. And with the applicant not being present, the planning commission chose to take the action to deny the application. To give you some background, this property is at 201 Sixth Street, which is the absolute end of Sixth Street down by the river. The property is owned industrial, and the scrap metal business has a permitted use in that district, subject to the condition of use permit. The scrap metal business is proposed to operate more like a transfer station where materials brought to the site and then trucked off to Pueblo for, for sale. So, it's not gonna be like a junkyard where the material accumulate. This application has been in process since August, and that started out at the, there was some confusion at the August meeting. The staff report was sent to the applicant via regular mail, and they didn't receive the staff report until the day after the planning commission meeting. So, there was, they were a no-show at that meeting, so which forced a continuation. And staff also had some concerns after our referral to outside agencies and to the department heads about the, the storage of hazardous materials on site. There will be some wrecked vehicles that come to the site, and we were concerned about antifreeze, motor oil, gasoline, those kinds of things leaking into the soil. And we didn't have that information at the time of the August planning commission meeting, so we recommended a continuance to September. In the meantime, staff had met with the applicant, and he had proposed to deal with those hazardous materials, building a 10-by-10 concrete pad to park vehicles on that would have, be potentially leaking materials. We had recommended that they increase that to 10-by-20, which is roughly the size of a parking space, and then put a six-inch curb around that to act as a containment for any kind of hazardous materials on the site, and he agreed to do that. And staff met again with the applicant October 5th, and he's since considering paving the site, which would alleviate any concerns that staff had over hazardous materials leaching into the soil. Another issue is the fencing of the property. Just prior to making application for the, the condition of use permit, he started installing a six-foot perimeter fence, which is standard in most locations around the city, but for an outdoor storage use like the, the scrap metal business, our code requires an eight-foot There had been some vandalism of his equipment on site, and he had requested putting barbed wire, which is also permitted in the industrial district, on top of the fence to come up to the eight-foot height to comply with our regulations. And we had considered that as an appropriate way of working with the applicant, not forcing him to replace the six-foot fence with an eight-foot fence. He is in the process of putting opaque screening on the site to screen the, the use from the, the street. Another issue is the Class B buffer yard. The outdoor storage is required to have a plantings every certain number of feet along the perimeter, but the site also has some very large mature vegetation, and we just recommended infill to come up with the same effect of doing the buffer yard as part of this application. There's an existing residence on site, and the fire chief was concerned about having that, that residence on the industrial use. Also, a residence is not permitted in the industrial zone. It's been verified by staff that the site is used for dry storage and as an office operation. And the fire chief has also requested that there be a 25-foot clear zone around this building for any materials that are stored on site. We have suggested some controls on operations that they abide by the noise ordinance, which limits noise to 45 decibels between 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And as I mentioned, the planning commission denied this application because the applicant was not present. And under the new Unified Development Code, condition of use permits typically are approved by the planning commission and then come to council for ratification. If we were to go through that normal process, the applicant would, or the, the planning commission's action would come to tonight's meeting. The council would then pull the item from the consent agenda and then schedule a hearing in an additional two weeks. So, we suggested that they appeal and be scheduled two weeks earlier for tonight's meeting. So, our recommendation, or staff's recommendation, is that council overturn the planning commission's decision to deny the, the application and, subject to that permission of use permit and the eight conditions in use staff report.
Thank you, Dan.
The applicant's here this evening, if you have any questions.
Okay.
And then, Mayor, I just, I want to make sure that we're very clear with this in that, so the, it, it can feel weird to overturn a planning commission and, and the wording appeal and all of that, but as Dan just explained, the planning commission didn't deny it based on the, the merits of the project or not. It was because of the miscommunication which created the applicant not to be at the meeting. So, it's not because the planning commission reviewed this and, and felt that there was something wrong with it. And then I want to make sure it's clear that Dan, how he made it is that staff's recommendation is to approve it because the applicant has worked with staff on all of these issues, and we feel it, it's sufficient to meet what any concerns we would have had, and that they have been very patient as this has not been the, the cleanest process. And so, and as Dan indicated, if you do have any questions for the applicant, they are here as well.
Okay. Thank you, Heather. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the explanation and, and the flexibility with working with the applicant. It sounds like you've done some neat stuff, so thank you in checking with the department heads. I appreciate that. I am wondering, so these are eight actions. How are we going to enforce this? Has that been talked about? I think some of these are pretty, pretty big deals. Do we go out and do regular inspections? Does he schedule them with us? Do we schedule them with him?
The staff will monitor the site on a regular basis as part of our operation, our standard operation.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Counselor Carson.
I actually think that's a good use of that property, and I move that we overturn that, that denial.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, yes, yes. So, I think that we need to have it be clear for the record that as part of the motion, it needs to include the recommended conditions of 1 through 8. Is, is that correct, as laid out in the staff communication?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. So, we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Grego.
That went pretty fast. I guess, what about the neighbors there? Do they have any concerns? Less's Glass, you know? All you do, all you do, own Less's Glass? Okay.
And the only other neighbor is the rail yard.
That's a good use, there's no good use there.
No. Okay.
Okay. So, we'll try this again. We have a motion. We have a second. No further discussion. Please start voting. Ms. LaChelle.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. The next item, go ahead. Is you still, Dan?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
This is a request by the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee to adopt Resolution 16-2018, placing the Martinez Shoe Store on the Alamosa Register of Historic Places. Mr. Semblem provided you with some very good background, and staff's recommendation is that you adopt the resolution.
Counselor V. Hill.
I move, well, a quick comment, Mayor.
Sure.
Just want to, again, give kudos and shout-out to the H-PAC, Ralph and Don and team. They, they have brought to our preservation rolls four to five buildings this year, and that's phenomenal, and that, if, if we were, were to compare our town to other towns our size throughout the state, we thought we would be up there. They do a lot of work, and they also have, I don't know if you guys know this, they have research work sessions every once in a while to look at other buildings that they can get on that, on that roll. So, I really appreciate you guys. And with that, I move that we approve Resolution Number 16-2018, placing the Martinez Shoe Store located at 502 State Street on the Alamosa Registry of Historic Places.
Okay, Counselor Carson.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, go. All right. Good deal?
No, no.
You're good? All right. So, these lights go on and off and on and off, so that's how I know who talks next. So, sometimes it's a little challenge. All right, start voting, please. All righty. Ms. LaChelle.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right. Good deal. Up next, we're gonna have Mark talk about the purchase of a dozer.
Mr. Mayor, council, we're, we're facing an issue where, right now, we have need of renting a dozer for two months this year. The first area that we have the need is taking care of the Green West, and the second area is Montútano Azul Park. Each month's rental would cost the city $17,000, and we have before you a proposal to purchase a used dozer, and budget for that purchase, $50,000. And historically, basically, eight or nine years out of 10, we will rent a dozer for about a month for some task or another that we have to do. So, we, it's at the point of, do we buy the equipment, or do we continue renting it nearly every year? And I think I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Counselor Carson.
What, okay, so can I, let me add just a little bit. Where we would pay for this is if council authorizes this, when we do that last budget amendment type of thing, then we would include this as part of the budget amendment. And how we would cover it is, Mark was very successful in receiving the recycling rebate grant for $23,793, so it would be very appropriate to put that towards this. And then, we had shared previously that the bids for the Outfall location came in very favorably, where we are able to remove the $350,000 from the 2019 CIP. So, that's the remaining $26,000 of that 350 we would want to put towards this purchase, probably after three years, if we had the same rate of rental, we've made up this investment.
Okay. Thank you, Heather. Counselor Carson, then Counselor Daniel.
I just have a curiosity question. How used is a $50,000 dozer?
It's actually a 1999 model, but it has relatively low, low hours on it. It has, I think, 3,600 hours on it. It's actually out at the Montovista Wildlife Refuge, and I think that's where it's been used. It's going back into, it's being bought back by Caterpillar from that entity. It has been there, and it's been, it has good service records. Also, we're in the, and that's one dozer. We haven't made the decision to purchase that particular one yet. We need to do some testing on the oil, the engine oils and the transmission oils to make sure there isn't some sort of damage in the, in the main power set of the, of the unit, but we think this will be the one that we want to.
For the most part, it's pretty, pretty charity.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. I was just curious.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, do we have, I'm assuming, yes, but a place to store it, and then people who know how to work on machinery like this already? So, that's not a concern at all?
Yes. Mr. Higgs is familiar with CAT equipment, and this, this is something definitely that the, our staff can work on, and yes, we have a place to store it.
Great. Thank you.
Counselor Hensley.
Well, to me, obviously, right off the bat is that the 34,000, or, yeah, 34,000 is pretty close to what it's gonna cost, so it seems to me as a no-brainer. And since we can cover it with our budget, we're making those adjustments, I'm gonna go ahead and move that we authorize the purchase of a used dozer in the amount of up to $50,000.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Please start voting. I think we might be missing one. Okay, no worries. Okay, Ms. LaChelle.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, good. Thank you. Up next, we have under finance, a public hearing and a second reading of ordinance number 28-2018, an ordinance making the annual appropriations for fiscal year 2019.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as you indicated, this is the second reading. The first reading, I spent quite a bit of time on it, but since this is the big budget for all of 2019, I do want to make sure we hit some of the major points again. From a revenue projection, we expected or projected a 3% growth in sales tax. For operations, we were able to fund a 3.5% For, um, operations, we were able to fund a three point five percent cost of living to maintain a competitive pay plan. Um, we also had the approximate sixty thousand dollar increases in there to the lower levels to make sure we're compliant with the new increase for minimum wage. Um, we have, we are continuing the capital projects. We are continuing the downtown master plan is carrying over slightly. We have, um, about four hundred and thirty-four thousand for the lead program, which most of that is passed through from an expense revenue perspective because of the grant at the state level. We are continuing our partnership with the Boys and Girls Tech Academy and we include, I, I'm not gonna go over all the, the capital items that we have in there, 'cause that is attached. However, there were a few changes in regards to your first reading and your second reading tonight. The first one, and, so I might have been a little bit premature, our bids for the outfall location did come in very, very positive. Um, we had five hundred thousand budgeted for this year and because the state changed the requirement of how far into the river we had to take it, we had anticipated needing another three hundred and fifty thousand for next year, so a total of eight hundred and fifty thousand. We opened the bids, the most qualified bid, um, without errors was, um, just over four hundred thousand. So, we are, we want to have the cleanest budget possible, so we want to remove that three hundred and fifty thousand for the discharge location that was in twenty nineteen. So it was great bids, um, and, and we were very fortunate for that to come in. While we were cleaning that up, um, we realized that we did not include previous council direction where we had talked to you about the Montana Azul Park and doing that lift station and then we would have portioned the costs out. We should have put that, um, lift station in twenty nineteen and moved the Alamosa lift station to twenty twenty, so we made that correction. But it's consistent with what council's discussion had been. So those are the only two changes between your first reading, um, and your second reading. I did realize, as we worked our way through after the first reading is, um, it probably would be worthwhile to mention some of the major budget amounts. Um, so for general fund, total general government, the budget is three million seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-four. For public safety, it is three million two hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and thirty-three. For public works, three million two hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-four. Cemetery, parks and recreation, out of general fund is six hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-one. For a total, general fund total of just under eleven million. For enterprise, um, with the revenue and the expenses and all that, um, with enterprise includes water, sewer, sanitation, sewage treatment, water treatment, the total is five million five hundred and sixty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-five. Um, and then we have some of the minor funds below that. For a grand total budget of twenty-two million nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-six. And our revenue projections are thirty-four million, just a little over thirty-four million. Any other thing to add, Judy?
No, not unless you wanted to mention about the health, the employee benefit money that we're moving to the other-
As we discussed in the budget meetings, um, our employees have been doing an amazing job in regards to the utilization of the health insurance, um, and that fund has actually grown larger than we need it to. Um, so we are appropriately, the enterprise would be going back to enterprise, general fund, back to gener- general fund, but there is a, a small portion that is going back to those different funds and the Parks and Rec Fund, um, to where the health fund can come down a little bit as well. And for that Mayor, we can open up the public hearing.
Okay, at this time, I would like to open up a public hearing for the second reading of ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty eighteen, an ordinance making the annual appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments in regards to, in this public hearing, uh, please come up to the podium, state your name and make your comments.
Um, what do I always say? I, uh, live at seven-eleven State Avenue and I, um, sleep in the country, in the county. Um, it's kinda weird, you know, I haven't, uh, been here to city council to speak, to speak out loud until, uh, since Ms. Daniel told me I wasn't, or said in a public meeting that I was not professional when I came before you. I don't, was I crushed? Not really. Um, but I ca- I told some people that I was gonna go to, um, Rainbow's End and buy a, a fancy little polyester suit and some new shoes and put on some lipstick and a hat and come in, but you know what? This is what you get. You get me, you get me with my work shirt with a stain on it, my, my work jeans and stuff. So that being said, I, I think I've said it before and, and I'm gonna say it maybe in a different way, maybe not, but, and, and, I don't know that I'm blaming anyone, I'm just questioning. Um, thirty years ago, I did the city landscaping. I did, worked very, very, very hard. I wasn't perfect, um, and there's, there's a long history there, but, you know, I was given a, a week to quit or be fired and so I, I took that, uh, first one and quit and took my storage shed home and within a week, the city bulldozed and destroyed every flowerbed I did in Alamosa. That includes the lift station, front of the train, City Hall, Terry's Liquor, you know, everything downtown, uh, out by the bowling alley. And my, my question to you is, if I did such a terrible job, and my, and my beds were pretty spectacular, why aren't we out of sight right now? Why doesn't Alamosa look better? And I, and I know you've budgeted fifteen thousand dollars and fifteen thousand dollars and, and we've, uh, I think, cut maybe to ten thousand this year or something. Um, but until you hire someone who knows how to take care of anything you put in and, and not, not put an extra burden on, on Andy or Jeremy or Dan or the gang, uh, because they have a lot of other things to do. And I, I know what we used to do and we used to sweep the curbs downtown and we would pull weeds and we would pick up, we would empty the trash cans, you know? So if there was a party at, in front of the brewery on a Saturday night, it didn't take until Tuesday morning to get that overflowing trash can picked up off of our main street. And I have pictures. Um, so I, I know Dan, is Dan still here? Dan, I know Dan's worked on some plans and, and, you know, we're moving forward. And of course, my idea of moving forward is not putting down all gravel and, and rock and boulders and it's, it's, I, I look at Mom's Garden and I have over sixty varieties of perennials in there. And I have over twenty-five variety of shrubs and a few trees. In the, in the city's plans right now, and granted, I couldn't meet with Dan this morning, but, um, we're gonna meet on Friday, the city's gonna put in six kinds of perennials and one kind of shrub. And, and that crushes me because I don't, I don't get it. I, I don't get why we can do a master plan and a comprehensive plan and a downtown plan, but we can't do what we need to in Alamosa to make us drop-dead gorgeous. Um, you know, we're beyond asking for anything to be done on the south side, especially with budget cuts, so, you know, Larry, as soon as he can, is gonna, I'm, I'm, I'm a, I can't say this word, I'm a witch. And so we're gonna put some alien sculptures down on the south side because that's all we can do. Uh, we'll continue planting in the recycled trash containers, um, you know, we'll paint the curb and gutter and stuff, but where is that money gone? You know, I, I was trying to ask Judy if there weren't, if there's a, uh, hidden black file on Ruthie Brown someplace, so, so I could find out what I actually made. So I'm gonna tell you, twenty-four thousand dollars sticks in my head. I could be wrong, so let's, let's bump that to thirty thousand. That paid for me, paid for all my girlfriends working, that paid for all the flowers, all the fertilizer, that paid for everything from at least April through October. So that money's gone, we don't have that anymore. So then, then I look and go, okay, we had Richard Simmons as Parks Director and he, he resigned and so we have Heinz take over his position part-time, or however it worked. I don't, I don't think you doubled his salary for doing both jobs. So my guess is you saved fifty thousand dollars a year. I don't know how long Heinz had the job, but if it was ten years, was that five hundred thousand dollars? Where has that money gone? Um, my idea for when the city does landscaping is not to destroy any more of what taxpayers have paid for, which includes here by the bridge or over by Olympia Park or something because all you need to do is, is water them, know how to prune, how to maintain and that sort of thing. Um, I'm kinda sick of, of administrations or count- whoever, Parks Directors, whatever, who did it, thinking, okay, we didn't take care of this, so let's dig it up and throw it away and let's put something new in. Um, that certainly is not, um, responsible by, by anyone working for the city, so I, I, I know you're, I know you're overspent, over budget, under budgeted, whatever, the roads are gonna cost more, everything's gonna cost more, but that's my life too. So, um, we gotta figure out a way so that when early iron shows up to Alamosa, across from our visitor's center, we don't have weeds three feet tall. It's embarrassing. Why would you stop in Alamosa, Colorado when you looked at weeds in the landscaping and, um, somehow, we ought to create some more pride. And, and putting down some gravel and some rock, um, doesn't make me stop, you know? So anyway, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments from any audience members? Okay, seeing that we have none, I will end this public hearing, bring it back to council. Okay, council? Anybody have any comments? Or Counsel Brawls?
No, I was just gonna make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Okay, Counsel Vehill?
Um-
We have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Counsel Vehill?
Uh, based on the comments that we heard for at, uh, the public hearing, could, Heather, could you or Andy talk to us a little bit about, uh, 'cause I, I do recall over the last year or two, uh, one of y'all saying that, um, the, the Parks and Recs guys do get some training on pruning and maintaining of flowers and garden beds and stuff like that. Could you guys comment on that, if you don't mind?
Yes, um, so it's, it's a conversation, as Ruthie mentioned, we seem to keep having over and over again. So, um, I've tried to make it very, very clear that per, I don't know if it's the FLSA or IRS regulations, we can't go back and forth between contract and employee and those types of things. And so, we're not going back to where it was before where we contracted with her. The other thing that I've shared is, um, our employees take pride in their knowledge and their desire for it to look beautiful. And so, um, we have, I wouldn't say, probably four years ago, it, um, started putting a little bit more money in regards to the training that we have available for our park staff. They're also very great at looking at what's locally and what can be done, so, um, they do a lot more training than just what might be reflected in that line item, but it's also been something that if we feel there's a need there that they're not getting, that we're, we're making it available to them. Additionally, when we held the public meetings, um, in addition to Ruthie, there were some others that indicated, um, you know, trash in the parks or some different things like that. And as everyone knows, we're increasing the landscaping thi- this next year, we're looking at a new park with Montana Azul, um, so that's gonna increase the burden. So council's budget before you tonight, um, has an additional seasonal employee for those maintenance aspects. Um, so, I'm not sure if you're looking for something else in regards to that.
I guess, a, a question I have is, do our Parks and Recs guys have training on how to maintain a flowerbed?
Yes.
And, okay, thank you.
I have one comment before we proceed. Um, Ruthie did spark some that, that I gotta mention and it's, it's just for the sake of mentioning it. One of the things that I have seen that's lacking in the last two years, and it was pretty evident this year, and, and her comment about the weeds was, was what sparked that, is that I do miss having a, a more diligent code enforcement officer, especially in some of our neighborhoods. Uh, I did see the weeds in the last two years, get a little out of control at times. I know five years ago, um, we had the old code enforcement officer. If my front yard had a weed that was over eight, six, eight inches tall, we would get a, a warning and we, it was pretty stern and, you know, I, I, it happened more than I would like to admit, and my weeds, I don't think were out of control. But the last couple of years, it has gotten a little bit out of control and I do agree with what you said about that, that lot. Um, there's lots in our neighborhood that are, they're pretty bad. So I would like to just emphasize that maybe we, we revisit that code enforcement officer position or, I'm not exactly sure how that changed. Um, but when we had the previous one, we couldn't get away with much, for sure, you know? So that was, that was a good thing and I do miss that, so I just want to put that out there.
And I, I'm not sure it's nothing, as far as structurally that needs to be changed, I think it's just messaging we need to give, um, to that area in regards to what our priorities are and, um, to try to be more aggressive and then probably also making sure we do a better job of promoting the number for people to call if they are seeing weeds.
Okay.
So we can better follow up on those two from a complaint basis.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Vehill?
Thank you Mayor. Another thing that I want to add to the discussion about the way things look in town as far as our new, uh, budget item for projects around town is that we also listen to people with their public input and the Water Smarts Team. And I think a few of us up here even said, and it was a, a meeting back in, uh, early May, that we do not want every, every, uh, every, uh, piece of land that we have identified could do, could get a makeover. We, I remember some of us up here said and we urged Dan and his group and the Water Smarts Team that we don't want this to all look the same. That we want diversity, we want different types of plants, we want different types of shrubs. So, uh, I think that's gonna happen. I don't think everything in town is gonna be rocked over, uh, with gravel and that type of stuff. So I just, and I, I would, I would hope that we just give it a chance. Let's, let's see how this looks in the springtime. Um, and, and I, I give kudos to our council for, for putting money towards this and let's see what happens. And then let's, then, then let's critique it.
Okay, thank you Counsel Vehill. So we have a motion, a second, and, um, looks like we're done with discussion, please start Okay, Ms. LaShell?
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. The next item under finance is a public hearing and second reading of ordinance number twenty-nine dash two, twenty eighteen, an ordinance establishing the employee pay plan for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you Mayor.
You're welcome.
Um, the, this is second reading, the pay plan, this ordinance is what authorizes us to hire employees that has to fit within the pay ranges set forth within this ordinance. There is one minor change between your first reading and the second reading, which is we have added a seasonal position title called ICE Monitor, um, and we've added it to grade six. This doesn't change your budget or anything like that, but we didn't have a specific job description. This is something we've just kind of-
This is something we've just kind of created that is needed. So we did add the title Ice Monitor to grade six, but again, it does not impact your budget. But that's where it appropriately fits. And the pay plan does include the 3.5% cost of living that applied through all the different grades, as well as some of the lower grades that received additional increases based on the increase in minimum wage.
Thank you, Heather. Councilor Vehill?
What does the Ice Monitor do?
I think that's something we will ask our Parks and Recreation Director.
Good evening, council. On the Ice Monitor is literally on the ice monitoring kids and skaters. When, you know, it's excitingly so busy over there that we could not expect our cashiers to really keep an eye on things, and you know, with the safety issues of skating, that's what the Ice Monitors are, literally safety monitors on the ice, so. Yeah, good analogy.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Okay, council, well, at this time, I will open up a public hearing for the second reading of ordinance number 29-2018, and ordinance establishing the employee pay plan for fiscal year 2019. At this time, if we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments, please feel free to come up to the podium. Okay, seeing none, I would now close the public hearing and bring it back to City Council. Councilor Vehill?
Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number 29-2018.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Okay, please start voting. Thank you. Ms. LaShell?
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. The last item under Finance is the first reading of ordinance number 30-2018, and ordinance approving rate increases for the provision of water, sewer, and solid waste disposal services.
Thank you, Mayor. This is probably one we should've brought to you the same time we brought first reading of the budget, because clearly, the budget that has been approved very much depends on the revenue that's projected from these rate increases. This is a little bit different in that council has historically approved the rates, setting them out for five years, so you're not having to kind of do this every single year. However, as we learned, as we went through the budget process and the CIP process this year, we have a much fuller CIP, we have a much better listing in regards to what our CIP needs are, as well as having a better idea in regards of what those costs will be. And it was a little deflating when we were going through those discussions, but it was something that as we looked at the CIP, we felt that some of the equipment and facility needs, the aging infrastructure, we're feeling better that we have a more accurate listing, but it does warrant a little bit of an increase from what you had previously approved. And from that, it's just a 1%. So when you look at the rates set out below for both water, sewer, and sanitation, you had already approved an ordinance in 2017 that had set out similar rates that were just 1% lower. And so, these are what those rates are. You will notice sanitation, still for 2019, before it was 9%, now it's 10%. That might feel like, you know, that's kind of a big number. I just, from a historical perspective, wanna point out, in 2015, when we hired the firm to come take a look at what our rates are, what they needed to be, that they needed to be more than just to take care of operations, but also to take care of capital needs. And sanitation was one of those areas where we were not bringing in the revenue we needed in regards to operations and capitals needs. I know this is something from a resident perspective. This is where, you know, they can fill this, when they get the utility bill, and those types of things. And so that's why I wanna make sure we're clear in regards to what the difference is, which is just a 1%. The other is just from a philosophical perspective, many would argue that it's never going to be a 0%. If you are having increases in health insurance, if you're giving increases in pay, if you have increases in cost of chemical, oil, gas, all of those types of things, and if you are putting money away for capital needs, a 3% is, or 0% is probably not ever going to be realistic. And so, not if you're funding this like a business, to ensure that you're bringing in revenue in order to cover expenses. And so, before you tonight is your first reading for the utility rates setting out till 2023.
Okay, Councilor Carson?
Remind me if I missed it, but why did it go up 1% from what we had talked about?
So when we took a look at what the capital needs are, and the operations needs, we needed to bring in enough revenue to cover those expenses. And I'll plop up this, this is when we look at the 10-year graph. It looks like we have a very healthy fund balance here, some of that is because of the water that we have. It's also because we brought in some of the funds from the sales tax for the major facility cost to the wastewater treatment plant. So you will see, when you begin into 2022, we get closer to that blue line, which is the 8% requirement, and we don't wanna get to the blue line. We need to stay a bit above that blue line.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Councilor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, I would ask, maybe before we get to the, this is the first reading, right?
It is, but again, you can always reopen the budget discussion, but if we reduce these percentages, you need to reduce your budget.
I'm not gonna ask for reducing, I wanna see, can we get an example of what a water bill would look like?
Yes, sir. Do you, so before the next reading?
Please.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you, Councilor Vehill. Okay, Councilor Broll?
So you're saying that we cannot get by without an increase of 1%, you say?
Correct. If you do not do these percentages that are set out here, we would need to modify the CIP.
Okay. All right, council?
Okay.
Okay.
You want me to go ahead, Mayor?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we pass on first reading, ordinance number 30-218, and set it for a public hearing at, what's the next meeting? November 7th, at seven o'clock, or sooner after.
I second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, start voting, please. Thank you, council. All right, up next, we have committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Uh, Councilor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I attended the broadband committee today. We will be sending an updated email out to those committee members, but are really going to start keeping communication open by email, but not having regular monthly meetings, unless they're needed. And so I think there was some really good discussion about, there are a lot of broadband needs within the San Luis Valley, but really making sure that this committee can be flexible enough to meet those needs, and so they're transitioning the way that it will look. So it was a really positive meeting, though.
Good deal. Thank you, Councilor Daniel. Councilor, I'm not for sure who was first, Councilor Hensley or Councilor Carson? But Councilor Hensley?
I went to the marketing retreat last Thursday, I think it was, and it was really nice. We had it at the Sand Dunes, and we took care of a lot of, there was a lot of information, a lot of plans for next year. Early Iron did come, and they made a report similar to what they did for us here at City Council. And boy, it's just exciting, even to hear it the second time, it's just really exciting what Early Iron does. And so they gave a really comprehensive report, and lots of plans going forward, looking at potentially changing, or actually updating the website, doing some new things with social media. Also, there was quite a bit of discussion in regards to the grant process, and sort of, it's not gonna make major changes, but just sort of firming up a little of the policies. It kind of had, I guess, just relooking at it, making sure all the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed. And obviously, everybody who gets that grant will know what they need to do and stuff, so just being a little bit more accountable. But lots of great things, lots of exciting things, so I have to tell you, it's a vibrant group, and I really think it's going really well.
Thank you, Councilor Hensley. Councilor Carson, and then Councilor Gregel.
We had a joint retreat with COG and the DRG, and it went pretty good. They wanted us basically, as a group, to, the valley as a whole, to start putting a unified brand behind certain things, so we discussed things like that. The COG also discussed intra-community transportation here in the valley, and that's something that they're working on. I did ask if it was along the lines of what CDOT was doing with the bus thing, and it's not, it's a separate program, so they're trying to create something within, you know, the different communities of the valley. That group is poised to do some pretty good stuff this year. I thought it was a really good meeting. So I look forward to some of the stuff that we're gonna be coming up with here in the future, and I'll report on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Carson. Councilor Gregel?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended a Recreation Advisory Board meeting on the 9th, and like I said earlier, we had a lengthy talk about the ranch plan. We talked about the golf course tree and debris cleanup. One of the biggest things that I think everybody should know is that the multi-use pavilion update, it opens up November 1st, Andy? For people to start using, and then after, I think it goes up a month, and then you'll start your hockey program, or whatever it is. Okay? Also, I mentioned the new hours of operation out there, Monday through Thursday, from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Fridays from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Sundays from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Gregel. Okay, no? All right, up next, we have staff announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. The only staff announcements we have are just some reminders of upcoming meetings before your next regular meeting. There is the ribbon cutting for the Alamosa County Judicial Center, which is this Friday, from 3:30 to 6:00. So that's really exciting to see that project open up, and to be able to enter it, and take a look, and see what that project entailed. I know the judicial employees are probably very excited to have their new facility. October 29th is the scheduled Alamosa Trail Showcase. My extravaganza language didn't make the cut, so we've got the ribbon cutting that's at 4:00 p.m. at the Alamosa Ranch North Pavilion. Again, please let Holly or Andy know if you're planning to attend. We've got the mayor's RSVP, that way we can make sure we have enough bikes, and helmets, and those types of things. The Police Department is once again hosting Fright Fest, which will be October 31st at 4:00 p.m. at Cole Park. And then the Parks and Rec, not to compete with it, has created a new exciting event, which is, I don't, I forget what we're calling it, but it's at the multi-use pavilion ice rink. There's gonna be a skate Halloween night as well, on the 31st, at I believe 6:00 p.m. So following the Fright Fest, if people wanna go skate in their costumes, it should make for an interesting time. We also, finally, we're managed to schedule our joint homeless meeting. It is going to be a work session, and we will have Luke Yoder help facilitate that. And it is scheduled for Tuesday, October 30th, 6:00 p.m. here in council chambers.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Carson.
I forgot to mention one thing that we talked about at the COG, and it's a little bit of a controversial subject, but I wanna put it out here so that council can start thinking about it. One of the things they were looking for us, they were wanting from us, was they wanted us to see if we would endorse hemp as a general product. We spoke about it, you know, so I just wanted to put that out there for the city, to start thinking about the potential for that crop, and what it's doing, and just be thinking about that in the future.
So I'm not sure what they mean by endorsement, but I can tell you with our work on the value-added ag, we've been very, very supportive of hemp, and what they're doing with that.
They're basically looking for us, as the COG, to endorse it, and so I just wanted to put that out there, that we, you know, we do wanna support it, just like the Peds did. It is a pretty valuable product, so I just wanted to put that out there. They were kind of wanting us to join them in that support. They wanna put an official brand that, I guess they really haven't done, you know what I mean? So just putting that out there, we talked about that.
Thank you, Councilor Carson. Thank you. Okay, is that it for staff announcement? All right, okay. Up next, we have the Local Liquor Licensee Authority Actions. Who's gonna take over that part?
I'd be happy to do that, Mayor.
Okay.
Just as an outline for the hearing this evening, the applicant will come forward and present their application, and give some background to council about that application, and present evidence that they have that relates to the needs and the desires of the neighborhood for this liquor license. Council can then have questions of the applicant, and after that exchange is completed, I will open it up for public comment, and then it'll return to council for discussion. And if there's anything that comes up in public comment that council would want the applicant to address, council can certainly have that occur at that time. So with that, the, as I understand it, applicant has not asked for any different definition of the neighborhood than our standard definition of the city limits plus a one-mile radius. And we'll turn over the floor to the applicant to present their application.
Okay, thank you. Please come up to the podium right there.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, how are you?
My name's Saranay Sra Som. I'm the owner of Thai Hut and Tempura House, coming soon, right now.
Thank you.
I post this one on the window, so like, notice for the people that I'm gonna have the liquor license, and ask them for, agree or not agree with the liquor license. This is the people that agree with me.
If you'll bring the notice to the deputy clerk, we'll mark that as Exhibit A. And then we'll mark the petitions as Exhibit B. And I see you, I'll let you get back there. I see you have marked on there that there was a total of 121 people. Is that 121 people signing that they supported the issuance of a license to satisfy the needs and desires of the neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, good. How were those petition signatures gathered?
I'm sorry?
How were those petition signatures gathered?
At Thai Hut, I present at the front deck, and then just ask them if they agree to sign, or if they not agree, they're not gonna sign.
So you wanna give council a little background on what the Tempura Hut is going to be?
Tempura Hut is gonna be ramen style, Japanese noodle ramen, and sushi bar also. So it's gonna be a little bit different from Thai Hut. Thai Hut is gonna be Thai food and sushi, so the other one is gonna be ramen and sushi. So I have to expand people to the new restaurant, because we have a lot of people to work at Thai Hut right now. Yes.
And where's the location?
I mean, 916 Main Street, at the Greek restaurant, the Old Greek Restaurant before.
Council, do you have any questions?
Councilor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Can you tell us why you think alcohol would increase participation at your restaurant, or increase patronage at your restaurant?
After one year and a half, around the experience on the Thai Hut, it's a very good sale on alcohol. And yeah, I think this liquor license gonna be working good with the... And, yeah, I think this, this liquor license gonna be working good with the Tempura House, too.
When do you plan on opening this business?
Hopefully, before the end of this month, I try to open.
Counselor Broyle.
Is this a new application for liquor license?
Uh, this is my second one.
No, but at the location, is this the first?
Yes.
This is a new liquor license?
Yes, sir.
Correct. It's a new liquor license for this business at that location. I don't recall whether the Greek restaurant had a liquor license there or not, but they did not transfer.
That location has had liquor licenses there previously, though.
So, with the new liquor license, we're gonna increase the liquor outlets from, it used to be forty-one, now it's forty-two. Now, now this is gonna be forty-three?
But from when you received the last count, I think Counselor Broyles is correct.
Okay. Counselor Hensley?
Okay, so two things. So, first of all, isn't there another restaurant, I can't remember the name of it, that, Emma's? Emma's, right?
Emma's.
Yes. So, they're gonna still stay there?
Yeah, they stay there.
And so, they have a liquor license, too, I believe, correct? Yes.
They sell beer. I, I saw they sell beer.
Yeah, they do, they, yeah. So, okay, so that was the first one. And then, when you were, or while you've been at Thai Hut, do you, have you had any violations there? Any liquor violations?
Uh, yes, one.
Okay, and so, when was that?
Uh, it's a mistake from our server, so we learned from that one. And right now, we not gonna have that mistake again.
Do you feel like, so I guess, so my question, 'cause we all make mistakes, and so, so from that, do you feel like you've really put into effect training and things like that as far as, so that wouldn't happen again?
I already trained them after that.
Okay.
Because after that, I tell them, if no ID, no sir.
And I have to tell you, I've, I've been in there, and I know, I've had my daughter who, I know they've carded and they've asked, actually asked for my ID, which I was kinda flattered about, but, so, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Okay. Do we have any further questions?
Question, have you had a liquor license denied before?
I'm sorry?
Have you had a liquor license that's been denied before?
No.
And do you have any criminal record?
No, not coming out right now.
Counselor, there, there was a criminal check that was performed by the city clerk that's part of your materials. I believe there was a DUI or a DWAI, I'm not sure, DWAI, a year ago?
Yes.
But as, as, so as part of the clerk's record search, she turned that up, and her report on that also references state law with respect to what kind of consideration you give things like that. And if you've got questions about that, I'm certainly happy to talk to you about that. But just the existence of a DWAI is not an indicator in and of itself of any kind of problem of the, of the fitness of the applicant to hold a license. In other words, you have to tie some specifics into a finding of unfitness if, if that's gonna be an issue.
Okay. Counselor Grego?
I don't know if I missed this. The hours of operation are gonna be when? From, you're gonna operate the business from what time to what time, Monday to Sunday?
Seven days a week, eleven to nine.
What time?
Eleven to nine.
Eleven to nine o'clock?
Eleven in the morning to nine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you. I would like to see the petitions, and I think they got stuck, sorry.
There you go. Thank you so much. They're gonna be headed that way now. Okay. All right, Eric?
If counsel has no further questions of the applicant, I'd open up the floor for comments from the public as part of the public hearing relating to the needs and the desires of the neighborhood for issuance of this liquor license at the proposed Tempura House. Yep, anyone can just please state your name and then give your comment, also whether you're a citizen of, or resident of Alamosa.
Ralph, Ralph Simblem is my name, resident of Alamosa, three fifteen State Avenue. I've known Sam for some time, and of all the buildings to operate a restaurant, and he has chosen to operate it in two of the most difficult buildings. You, we all know what's come through the Thai Hut, as well as the, the building that you're looking to put the, and of all people, I think it would be a major benefit to that end of downtown, as we call it. I think it needs it, you know, so it's my opinion that it should be approved.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next?
Daryl Cooper, I live here in Alamosa, and I would, I would publicly state, I would oppose this liquor license. I agree with, with Mr. Broyles. We, we don't need any more liquor outlets in town. I'm, I just am concerned about that. I'm concerned about the viability of that location. There's been several restaurants in and out of that, and it appears that the, they have a hard time sustaining a business in that location, a restaurant business in that location. With that, I would, would like to go on record that I oppose the issuance of this liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Srasom, you can sit down if you want. You, you can also stay there and intimidate people, but...
Thank you.
I don't know this fella, but he wants to go into business. And he wants to do what he needs to do to make his business survive, thrive, which is what we all should hope for. There may be forty liquor establishments in Alamosa. I don't know. I may go to two of them, but that's my choice. And, and so, I, I don't see how you can deny him the right to be in business, and he's making that investment, which isn't cheap, and he may survive and he may not. All of us may survive and may not, so I'd be thrilled to have something on that corner or in that, not quite on the corner, but to me, it's a beautiful building, and I hope you make a go of it. But I can't do that sushi. Ugh!
Okay. If you have any other comments, oh, I'll pass, I'm sorry, Eric, I'm just stepping into your role. Go ahead.
I, I think that works very well coming from you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Any other, any other people wishing to speak to the license application? I don't see any, Mayor. I'll turn it back over to counsel.
Okay. Counselor, it doesn't look like anyone's ready. Counselor Carson?
I move that we approve the application by Tempura House for the license.
I don't think we're moving.
Are we not there yet?
I'm sorry. I was typing, I'm sorry. Yeah, the, the appropriate motion, if you have no further discussion, would be to direct, i- i- if you are ready to direct me in one particular way, to direct me to prepare proposed findings for you, either granting or denying.
I make a motion that you do that, please. Granting.
Granting.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just had one come in. I've been to your restaurant and have had great meals there, and I applaud anyone who has the, I don't know what to call it, but courage to open up a restaurant business, because restaurant businesses are the toughest business to run in any community in a big city and rural town, so I wish you much success in your future business endeavors.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Please start voting. Oh, you had a comment? Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. We, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Go ahead. Counselor Broyle has a comment.
Well, I, no, I just wanted to say that I, I'm dubious about the need of a new, another liquor store in Alamosa. You know, now we'll have forty-three outlets, and I'm concerned about citywide, about alcoholism, how it affects our children. So, I definitely need to be convinced of the need, and I'd, I'd like to see the findings by our city attorney.
Okay. Counselor Carson? Okay. Counselor Hensley?
So, I would just add, in, I understand in the sense, it sort of looks like, well, why would we need another one? But I will tell you from my background, 'cause I, my background is restaurants, and it is, it, it, it does make a difference. And I remember when the Thai Hut first opened and you didn't have a liquor license. And it is challenging to have a restaurant. I know when I've been in, running restaurants, people sometimes like to have a drink with their meal, and it actually can hurt the business by not having the liquor license. And so, I, and so, I totally respect what you're saying, but I do understand also in the restaurant business that even if you are next door, which you will be, you'll be next door to another restaurant, it would almost be, I feel unfair to allow Emma's to be able to serve beer and that you can't. I think it gives a, I don't wanna say an unfair advantage, but same time, I just think allowing somebody to run their business within the legal limits of what they can and give them the best advantage. So, I just thought I'd throw that in there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Daniel?
Mine will be short because Liz said pretty much what I was thinking. But I, I do believe that a restaurant is different than another liquor outlet. And so, I think, to me, they're, they're two different things in our community. And so, I do support a restaurant license differently than I would look at another liquor outlet.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Carson?
Just to, I want, I wanna state that I, I do agree with you, David. I do agree with Counselor Broyles. I do agree with Mr. Cooper. I, I personally am not a fan of alcohol, but I am a fan of businesses and, and moving our town forward, and I agree with you guys, and I do know that it, I've owned restaurants in the past, and it is difficult to, you know, it hurts you. So, that's, that's my reasoning behind this. I, I do agree with you. I don't, I personally do not think we need any more alcohol establishments, but a restaurant is, you know, it's the exception, and I agree to that. So, that's my reasoning in approving, and I do wish you good luck.
Thank you so much.
All right, counsel, we have a motion. The motion was for, you wanna repeat that motion?
It was to direct staff to find findings of fact in favor of granting the license.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right. Okay, so I deleted your votes earlier, so you're gonna have to re-vote, okay? Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. LaShaw?
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you so very much. Okay, wow. Looks like the last item is counsel comments. Do we have any counsel comment? You're kidding me? Oh, wow. Okay, that's amazing. Counselor Beal, I knew it, I knew it, I knew it.
So, the, the school board, a couple weeks ago, approved, that, that, they, they said that they're gonna send a, a letter of approval. They back the passing of amendment seventy-three. We're in election season. Election night is three weeks away, just under three weeks away. Amendment seventy-three would bring more funding for schools, public schools across the state. And I would just urge you all, I'm, I'm probably speaking on my own, not on behalf of counsel. I would urge you all to do some research on amendment seventy-three and how it could help our, our, our valley's school districts. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Grego?
Just one comment. We discussed about the meeting in November. Are we still gonna have that meeting or because of the Thanksgiving?
So, it's interesting. I was just reading an email from the city clerk. She had sent out an email asking if we should either keep it, cancel it, or move it, because it is the night right before Thanksgiving. She's heard back from counselors Jan, Charlie, and David, who are good canceling it, as well as Ty. And I can say from a staff perspective, we don't have any pressing agenda items. So, unless there's any heartburn, I'd like to just reply to her email and say, cancel it.
I just thought I'd bring it up because...
And we can't cancel it. We do whatever we do.
Okay.
We won't have it, but we have to do it some...
Is that something we'll have to discuss first meeting in November?
Correct. I think that first meeting in November, we'll have an action item for you to combine it with the, probably with the December meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, and, and I would like to thank staff for helping get the word out about the city's stance on opposing amendment number seventy-four. It took a collaborative effort from the entire team to make sure that we got the word out in a formal press release the other day that came out in the Valley Courier, so thank you all for that. And on a good note, my youth football team that I helped coach, I'm an assistant coach along with Adam Grego and Coach Kyle Woodard, our fifth and sixth grade football team went undefeated this football season. So, let's give them a round of applause. And I just wanna thank all the community members who came out to support that youth football team all season, who traveled to Pagosa Springs, the different parts of the state. Thank you. That's...
One more.
Oh, one more. Counselor Beal?
I wanna, you, you talk, you brought up sports, so I wanna give a shout-out to our Alamosa High School volleyball team. They're currently undefeated. They're being coached by Mr. Andy Rice's wife back there. Undefeated, they're number three or four in the state, and they are hosting senior night tomorrow night versus Montevista. And I'm sure they'd love for you all to show up. And they're gonna host a regional in a week and a half or so, two weeks, so. So, go check those girls out.
I'm really glad you brought it up. Thank you very much. Okay, if we have no further comment, this meeting...